Okay, good evening. Apologize for the late meeting start here, but we did have the committee meeting that ran right at, right to seven, so it is now nine after seven. On December 2nd, 2024, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of Worcester City Council. We are obviously live here in council chambers and we are also live streamed on YouTube. And with that, our next regularly scheduled meeting will be December 16th of 2024. Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the attendance?
Mr. Abernathy?
Here.
Mr. Gaffey?
Here.
Mr. Husey?
Here.
Ms. Knappick?
Here.
Mr. Malta?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Okay, we knew, Ms. Warden had indicated that she was going to be unable to be here this evening, so at that point, we do have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. And with that, I would ask you to stand and join the members of council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion from council to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaffey. All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? All right. Minutes are approved. Communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Ms. President, council. First off, a little addition to my notes, I want to give a shout out to Jason Rohr and also to Mr. Abernathy and his committee for the meeting we had previously. You know, I think you know this, but if you didn't know this and just watched that meeting, you wouldn't know that Jason's new on the job. Thought he did a great job of walking through the budget and, you know, he's in a tough spot. He filled a spot where the person that had that job before him is now his boss more or less, so he's looking over his shoulder, so big shoes to fill there. And he's doing a great job and, you know, he mentioned about the outside providers and what an impact that's had on both the 2024 budget and 2025 going forward. That's all happened kind of in the last few months, so in his first budget, you know, first time he's trying to put a budget together, he's got to deal with that, so doing a great job under challenging circumstances. And I think we, Worcester Medical Hospital did well in making that hire, I mean, Andre and I both had participated in that process. I think Jason, as you can tell, he's, what you see is what you get from him. And he's really committed to community hospital concept. I think it's one of the things that brought him to Worcester and it's one of the reasons I think he's hired. So, again, hats off to the committee, but I want to give a shout out to Jason for his efforts. Just, I think with the holiday, you're going to be happy to hear, it says pretty short list this time, of things that we've done since the last meeting. On the 19th, Joel and I met with leadership of the Seaman Corporation to talk about the multipurpose path that's going to be installed along Venture Boulevard and where the location that's going to be. You know, that's part of the infrastructure improvements we're going to pay for out of the TIF there, so it allows us to be able to do that. That same day, I was invited to attend the NAMI art exhibit at Wayne Center for the Arts. That was a very worthwhile thing to do and got a chance to meet some of the people who participated in that, so I appreciate the invitation. On the 20th, had an opportunity to attend the More Than a Game event at Orville High School. I want to give shout out to Orville High School and the whole community. You may not be familiar with this event, but it's a Special Olympics event for people with, from Nick Amster and the Idaho Sioux. And the high school boys and girls teams help support it and they help the players and they packed the gym for that event, so it was a real nice event. My daughter got to be a cheerleader, she was thrilled. And afterwards, Mayor Plybden was there and we, he joined us for dinner afterwards downtown. So, just a great community event by Orville and I want to give them a shout out for doing that. And then finally, on the 22nd, we had the Window Wonderland event, which the weather was not ideal, but Shannon and her crew pulled that off very well. I want to give also thanks for all the people on the city side that participate in that, not just the fire department, their involvement, the police and all the PPM people that helped set that up. So, a nice, you know, I think most of the people I talked to when they were there were surprised how many people we had in attendance despite the weather. So, it was a good event all in all. Looking ahead tomorrow night, we have the Athena Awards and our own Ashley Herschberg is going to be one of the people recognized and we're looking forward to that. December 4th, there's a historical center open house, so if you get a chance to stop at that, I'm sure they'd appreciate seeing you. December 5th, Humane Society is doing a groundbreaking for an expansion. And on the 12th, Main Street Worcester is, kind of has a licensing through Heritage Ohio and they're going through their annual certification process, so the Heritage Ohio team will be in that day to look at Worcester, meet with community stakeholders and go through that process. So, wish them well with that and if you happen to run into some Heritage Ohio people downtown, treat them well because they're a big part of that operation. And then we've got the seasonal stuff going on, it's, you know, it's all going to fly by before we know it, end of the year, but this coming weekend, we have the Nutcracker Art Center going on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. The following Saturday after that, Tube of Christmas at the high school and the Saturday after that, Burning River Brass is playing in town, so just a bunch of events to get you going through the year end. Just a quick agenda review, we have two items on third reading. They're related and the first will need to be tabled due to a statutory notice provision that hasn't been satisfied yet and you'll hear more about that. Three items in second reading, the 2025 budget, extension of recreational marijuana facility moratorium and amendments to the management benefits provisions and four items on first reading. The second and third of those, 2024-94 and 2024-37, don't need to be passed tonight, but we do need to have those passed by year end. So, if not tonight, then at our next meeting, which again, it jumps out, but we only have one more meeting left before year end. Last thing I've got is that, you know, from last council meeting, we got the impression, we floated out the idea that we, whether council would be interested in revisiting, raising the threshold on love matters that needed council action from $50,000 to $75,000 to parallel the increase in bidding limits that we put in earlier in the year. And there seemed to be some receptivity to that on behalf of council, so unless we're instructed otherwise, we probably will have that on the agenda for your next meeting. With that, I will, Joel might have something from his updates, I'll turn it over to him.
Since you brought that up, I did go back and revisit, I think somebody on the council might have been President Sanders asked, you know, to update the list of items that we're approaching or add or maybe, okay. So, I did do that, I did, I got a draft of that, I'll send that out then here this week to everybody so you have that. And then, we do get asked every once in a while, are we on schedule with leaf pickup? And just got an update from Kurt and we're back on schedule as of today, they, weather permitting, they will be, they are still planning on being done by Christmas. They're about 60% based on past totals, volume of, volume of leaves. They've picked up 428 dump truck loads in the last 22 days. That's about 4,800 cubic yards, so if everything holds true, they'll be done. Weather, weather permitting, will be done by Christmas.
Where are they all going now, the leaves?
I think we're taking most of them out to Woodland.
Okay.
That's all I have, Ms. President.
All right, very good, thank you. Next item, we have some petitions, actually, we don't have any petitions. We do have communications from the public. Before we get to that, we've got a couple liquor control requests, which the first one, I guess before Ms. Hamilton reads that, we have options to either have a, hold a hearing in the county seat, hold a hearing in Columbus, or hold, do not hold a hearing at all. And so at that point, if you want to read the first one for us, Ms. Hamilton?
The first request is for a new D5L license for Three Dudes Downtown LLC, DBA City News, 135 South Market Street.
Okay, well, from council, do I have a motion in terms of how you would like to?
Motion to waive.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second? By Ms. Knappick?
Just by voice.
All right, all in favor of the not holding a hearing, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed in any direction, other direction? Okay. All right. And then the next item, the next liquor control item?
The next one is also for a new license, it's a request for a new D1 license for Currypot LLC, DBA The Currypot LLC, 206 Bell Avenue.
Okay. And the same thing, do I have a motion in terms of how we would like to handle the, or not handle, the hearing?
Motion to waive the hearing.
A motion to waive by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick? All in favor of waiving the hearing, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ms. Hamilton will pass that along to the state and our next item, well, communications from the public, we have Ethan Bachman that has signed up to talk about Resolution 2024-92, which has to do with our extended memoratorium or related to the retail sale of marijuana. Mr. Bachman, you can just come on up to the center here and please let us know your thoughts.
I just want to say thank you as a husband and father in the Christian community. Recreational marijuana is a concern for me and my family, so I appreciate that we're slowing down the sale of it, our town as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports, we just finished our finance committee meeting, so Mr. Abernathy, you want to enlighten us on all the fun things you guys talked about, that'd be great.
Well, again, thank you to Mr. Rohr coming in from the hospital. We got a nice, thorough, in-depth report from the hospital. So thrilled that we didn't quite get all the way through the city, so that is going to be coming up as part of our agenda tonight, so we'll touch on that a little bit more as we go on, so not a ton to report on at this time.
Do you anticipate another committee meeting in two weeks?
Probably yes. So, I guess I should probably go ahead and say schedule for 6:00 PM on the 16th.
I think that's a good idea.
All righty. Well, moves us into unfinished business, which at this point, we have a third reading on ordinance 2024-30, but before we move that to Mr., before Ms. Hamilton reads it and Mr. Abernathy tells us about it, I know Mr. Husey wishes to recuse himself from this, Mr. President. And with that, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-30, creating the Silver Road Tax Increment Financing Incentive District, declaring improvements to the parcels within the incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I need to move to table this as we have not met all the statutory requirements on this, so I do need to motion that we do table this legislation.
Motion to table by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second on the?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers? Ms. Hamilton, if you want to call the roll on the tabling?
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Okay, so the item is tabled and we'll bring that up at the appropriate time, which at this point, I'm assuming will be in two weeks?
Yes.
Since we're only short, what, two days?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have a special meeting out there.
No, we will not.
You might by yourself.
Mr. Myers, you can, but you will not have a quorum.
I think you could discuss anything you wanted.
I could. Nobody to argue with me.
No. All right, our next item of unfinished business is also a third reading item that I know Mr. Husey has also stated that he was going to recuse himself from, so before we get, turn this back over to Mr. Abernathy, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it.
Ordinance number 2024-31, approving the execution and delivery of a development agreement with the Worcester Development Company to LTD.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I'm also going to motion to table this as this is connected to the previous and we're going to look to pass these together at the next meeting, so motion to table.
Motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick? Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
All right. We'll pick both of these back up in two weeks then. And Mr. Husey has returned to his seat. Our next item is ordinance 2024-35. This is the second reading on this particular item. This will also be Mr. Abernathy, but before that, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it.
Ordinance number 2024-35, an ordinance appropriating from various funds to individual accounts for the current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Worcester for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
So, this is the city of Worcester's annual budget. All of us were present for the committee meeting. Anybody wish to add any comment to the, from the finance committee meeting? Seeing none, I am going to go ahead and move this to the third and final reading and we will have a second committee meeting prior to the next scheduled meeting.
Okay, so we've had our second reading on this, you'll have a committee meeting next time and, all right, very good. Next item, Resolution 2024-92, which will be by, introduced by Ms. Knappick, but first, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it to us.
Resolution number 2024-92, a resolution extending a moratorium on the granting or processing of permits for any building, structure, use or change of use that would enable cultivation, processing or retail sale of marijuana within the city of Worcester and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Knappick, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, I'm going to move this to third reading for next meeting so that we have a full complement of council members here to vote on this.
Okay. Is there any discussion anyone needed to have on this? Okay, well, we'll pick it back up in two weeks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Last item of old business will also be Ms. Knappick, ordinance 2024-36, but Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-36, an ordinance amending Chapter 162, management benefits and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Knappick, floor is yours.
Yes, and I apologize, I was just able to pick up my agenda, I've had problems with my email and between the holidays and being sick and, but I had some questions on this. It says that this is estimated total funds, this is for the window replacement for City Hall. Estimated total fund cost, 192...
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, 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 I was on the next one.
Yeah, this should be management benefits?
This is, yeah, this is for the, the amending, the management benefits. And from what I can see, it indicates the changes are exception, would be employees from retirement from city service shall be eligible for retirement payment upon retirement from the city and shall be paid in their final paycheck. So, I'm assuming that that just means that if, if a city management employee has sick days left over, vacation days left over, they can apply for those to have those put into their final paycheck, correct?
That's part of it. This was, you know, we did a, we did an update to the management benefits and conform them to the other union contract from last time. We missed this one. So, it just changes the dates as to when they can do. We had, we had some people that were retired and were waiting to retire in order to take advantage of it and modifying their dates. We were just saying, no, you don't have to wait, this has benefited you for the previous year anyway.
Okay.
So, and this is just something we missed when we were updating the ordinance that conformed to the, to the other union contracts.
Okay, and this is the same as, and that's what I assumed because I looked at the other contracts and I figured out that this was the change that, that made the management contract equivalent to the other contracts.
We inadvertently left out those that retired, so pretending that they weren't eligible. We didn't mean to exclude them in the event that everybody else...
Don't exclude our retirees. Okay, I understand that, thank you. I think I'll just keep this on second again until we have a full complement of council members.
All right, very good. Let's had its second reading and we'll move on to our new business.
The windows.
Of course.
That I was ready to jump on.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, which actually, that's even...
It's not yours.
Not yours.
I know. I was just helping Mr. Husey out.
Yes, you were.
Thank you.
All right, with that, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-93, a resolution authorizing the director of administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest invest bidder for the Phase Two City Hall Window Replacement Project.
Okay, Mr. Husey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is a pretty straightforward resolution, just to authorize the city to go out to bid for Phase Two of three of the window replacements in City Hall. I spoke to Mr. Monet earlier today. We already finished Phase One, which is the south wing that direction. He said Phase Two, which we'll be looking at coming up in 2025, is the north wing and then we'll do the center middle section in '26. So, this is just for Phase Two. And if there's any other, oh, and Mr. Monet said we're just trying to make these windows more energy efficient, they're still original to the building from 1960 odd something. And we've, just in the north wing replacement, he said we've already seen some energy savings from that, so that's, that's been good to see. Any other questions? I know Mr. Monet is not here, I'm sure Joel or the mayor could fill us in.
I just had a real quick question. I noticed it came in, is full amount budgeted? It says no, it's $192,475. Is this money that, is this appropriated in the 2025 budget so I can go from looking at this and I can go to the proposed budget and see the same number there?
Yes, this is included in 2025.
Okay.
We're just on phases because this is, we figured out this is about how many we can do within a certain temperature, you know, wind, no pun intended, you know, between hot and cold, and so they, they just able to get Phase One done in times of decent weather, we basically have windows gone, outside people still working.
So, there really isn't any urgency on this because it's not going to be something they're going to be starting tomorrow in 31 degree weather?
I think he was just wanting to get bids out, get ready and then that first of the year, hopefully get in on, in the schedule for somebody early, you know, in the year so we can plan for the, either late spring or early fall, would be the two time.
We wouldn't want you to be too uncomfortable, Mr. Montgomery, you mean, too cold or too hot, you know?
Well, I would, I'm uncomfortable about appropriating money before we've actually budgeted the money, that's kind of, but I understand where you're coming from.
We've done this on several other contracts, we were trying to just get into the bidding and the schedule for contractors.
But, Ms...
Ready after the first of the year.
Ms. Hamilton, we, yeah, I, we had a problem with this, or we had this conversation before, we're authorizing them to go out for a lawful bid.
Right.
We can't act on it until the budget's been approved.
Right.
So, this at least, this just gets that, those weeks of bidding process started, is the way they explained it to us last time.
Well, actually, what it says is this Phase Two, it requests us to authorize the advertisement for bids and to accept and, and to enter into a contract.
But we don't have to pay it. We don't pay it.
I understand that, but the idea of, how comfortable do you feel entering into a contract when you don't know what your rate, you know, your raise is going to be next year? So, those are the, just what I'm thinking, so I'm...
We wouldn't be in the contract if we wouldn't have the funds, so legally because we signed it, we'd have to tell after you would pass the budget.
Oh, in that case, I'm fine. If you can't spend it till we make a budget, I'm okay with it.
Correct, it takes like a month or more to...
Right, it's, I think six weeks was the number we got from John Rice last time.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So, Mr. Husey, your, what would you like to do with this?
Yeah, I was a little unclear, do I need to suspend rules?
Yes.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules, second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Okay, well, fortunately, we only had one person missing, so we can do this.
Do you need a pen?
Okay, motion to suspend the rules has been approved.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Husey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is adopted. Next new item will be by Mr. Myers. Resolution 2024-94, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-94, a resolution authorizing the director of administration to contract with Community Action Wayne Medina Counties for the provision of transportation services for qualified participants and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Myers, floor is yours.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, we've been over the transportation issue a number of times and it's been pretty thoroughly explained. This is the resolution for the first six months as we're working on the other program with Kevin White, who's here, and Ashley. So, do you have anything you'd like to share, either of you, about this?
Sure, I mean, this is the typical transportation contract that we have with Community Action. I just wanted to point out that we talked a little bit about it in the budget meeting, but this is just for six months versus a whole year. And that's because, starting July 1, we'll be on the state fiscal year, which will be the last day that we'll be kind of on this old system. And that's kind of the worst case scenario, there is an opportunity that we might be able to get into some funds a little bit earlier that the, I believe are actually state funds, not to confuse state and federal a little bit, but there's a chance that we can do RFD for transportation services before that, but this just covers us until then. So, the contract will have a termation clause at the end that we could end it before and switch to a newer, better system.
Does anyone have any additional questions regarding this? Again, it's the, up to the first six months, if not less, so. All right, I think this is budgeted, no?
Oh, it's budgeted, but it's three reading.
Yeah, actually, I think we're just, there's no real reason to hold this up, I think we've been over the transportation stuff, like I said, at the past meetings, so I'd like a motion to suspend the rules this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers, seconded by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
All right.
Motion to adopt, sir.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Myers, is there a second? Second by who?
Me.
Mr. Abernathy? Okay. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Okay, resolution is approved. We, ordinance, next item, ordinance 2024-37, again, will be by Mr. Abernathy, but before that, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-37, an ordinance authorizing the director of administration to enter into an agreement with representatives of the Worcester Firefighters Union, IAFF Local 764, regarding wages, benefits and terms and conditions of employment and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
highlights, so just a few things that were highlighted were that they're going to change the fitness testing to take place in May with one makeup test in June, and the reason for this is they're going to actually be increasing some of their fitness testing incentives, so if they can exceed the job performance standards, they do get one through three-tier levels for incentive, so obviously, that is an incentive for them to stay in a top physical condition, which is, which is good for our first responders. We are seeing wage increases of 5% for 2025 and then 4% for the next two years, so these are comparable with the current market in similar collective bargaining agreements. The city and the union agreed to extend the firefighter medic trainee out program out two years from appointment to obtain the firefighter two and the Ohio EMT paramedic certification, previously it was one year. The period may still be extended by an additional year for good performance at the discretion of the fire chief, so, and there's also some additional clarifying language that was added for the participant that's added upon completion of the certification. There's also some retention pay increases, they are modest increases across each tier, there's also some language in regards to overtime, comp time, and call-in, they increased the call-in pay for employee coming in back to cover operations, so compensation will be at a rate equal to two hours versus one hour of regular time, so a little bit of an increase there. And there was one thing that I appreciate, there's an increase in reimbursement for instructional books for promotional applicants, so we're reimbursing folks that are studying up to try and become promoted into different positions. So those are some of the highlighted areas of the collective bargaining agreement, everything seemed to be pretty well in order, and nothing really stood out as wildly out of line to me, so, anything that anybody else from council wants to bring up or wishes to ask?
The only thing I wanted to ask about was, I was noticing on the health fitness that for Level One, we then, well, for all of them, we basically doubled the amount of the bonus, what was the last time that we changed the bonus, that we increased it? We went from 200 to 400, 300 to 600, 400 to 800.
Yeah, I don't think it was changed since we instituted...
Pardon me?
I don't think it was changed since we instituted it.
One was instituted?
Two contracts ago? Yeah, so six years?
Six, seven years ago?
Okay, I just wondered.
So it's been a while.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that makes sense to me then.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, well, I've punted on a few, so I'm going to, I'm going to take a chance and motion to suspend the rules and vote on this tonight.
All right, motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second by Mr. Huzai, Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Huzai?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Motion, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Huzai.
Beginning to wonder if you could pass the legislation, weren't you? I was like, ooh, well, some people are wanting to go to multiple readings. Able this, hold that. Hey, I can actually pass some legislation tonight, hopefully.
Well done.
All right, Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Huzai?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Okay, motion is adopted. Last item this evening, at least in the new business column, resolution 2024-95, and Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-95, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with the Worcester YMCA for professional administrative services related to the management and operation of the City of Worcester's swimming facilities.
All right, Mr. Myers, the floor is yours.
Thank you, this is very similar to the agreement we've entered into with the YMCA for the last number of years, a while now, the only major difference you'll see is obviously we're not going to be opening Christmas run pool, you will see in the agreement, if you look at the details, they have increased our hours of operation for both the Freelander Pool, and the YMCA has also added hours to the Ellen Shapiro auditorium, hopefully trying to accommodate our families and people in the community to be able to have a place to swim, so, is there anything you'd like to add this evening?
I just, Nikki, I'm sure about the CEO of the YMCA, Wayne County's also here, I just wanted to thank her and her team, we've met a few times with Heather Dennis and Michelle Horst from Art City Team, and really taken the time to make sure that the community and also day camps are also factored into the hours that the pools are open and the auditorium, but she's taken also the time to make sure that these, you know, the numbers are figured out, and there's accommodations made. Also, that the staffing, that we're not taking too many staff away, so that whenever all of our pools are open again in 2026, that the staff is still there, so we really want to make sure that we're being mindful of that as well, because those are, you know, high school, high school kids, college kids, and because if we don't, if we don't staff them this year, they're going to go somewhere else, and then, and then where are they going to be, so, just trying to be mindful of all of that, looking at additional programming as well to fill those gaps, Michelle's got some really great ideas, so, we've got a really great team, and the team at the YMCA has been really great to work with, too, so.
I'm curious, and this may not be for this legislation, but with Christmas run closing, are we figuring out transportation to try and help some of the folks that are in that community to get to Freelander, get up to the high score, to the different pools?
You're right, it's not in this legislation.
Sorry.
It's a good question.
Can I get, can I get an answer on it, though? We can, we can be bothering Mr. White about that here in the, over the next few weeks. Okay.
It's definitely consideration.
We talked about that when we considered closing Christmas run pool a number of years ago, one of the solutions was to provide dedicated or semi-dedicated transportation, so I think we could dust that off and see what we can't do to accommodate them. Thank you.
Since I was somewhat slothful, I did not go back and look at our budget from last year, but what did, what was this, what did, the last time we budgeted this, what was the dollar amount?
In 2024, it was $197,075.
So there's a little bit of a savings from the fact that we're only, we're down a pool-ish.
Yeah.
Yeah, $26,402.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, if there's nothing further, I'd like motion to suspend the rules this evening?
Second.
All right, motion to suspend the rules, seconded by Mr. Abernathy, Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Huzai?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
All right, you have a motion for us there, Mr. Myers?
A motion to approve this evening.
Motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Huzai, Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Huzai?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay, resolution is adopted. With that, we will move on to our miscellaneous, we've got a couple people that have signed up to speak, first one's Mr. Barnett, please step up to the podium.
Okay, I'm going to tell you about November 15, I get a phone call, look on caller ID, don't know this person, but it's from Columbus, well, I'm going to answer it, it's a young man from Governor DeWine's office, and he's wanting to know what's going on, so I told him, he said, why is the city manager emailing me, too? I said, I don't know, did I say anything wrong up here, was I lying? This is not a dangerous intersection, the funds are improperly being used, it's almost a fraud case, well, guess what, this young man giving his name, his threat number to his office, he said, make sure you go to council meetings, I said, I will. They are being transferred to other departments. Do you see what I'm saying up here? That isn't a dangerous intersection, this is what Governor DeWine made this money for, they don't have a money tree, they just pull money off down there to spend, this money's coming out of every one of our pockets, and it shouldn't be used, let's just move on, I talked, a week ago, Saturday, I was in the store, and a man come up to me, everybody in this room knows this man, he said, Mr. Round, no roundabout, how's it going? I said, ah, not too good, I don't think, I don't know, he said, this needs just to go away, this is what people are saying, Bob, Bob, let me tell you as a friend, I've heard it, what's Bob trying to do, you know, one term later, I'm saying this as a friend, this just needs to go away, there's no reason for it, we lived with it for 30 years, we can live with it for another 30 years, I don't know why you're so hell-bent on building this roundabout, I don't know, tell me, Governor's involved now.
Mr. Thomas, which I don't believe he's here, I believe he left.
Yeah, he was here for the...
Yeah, for the...
License.
Right, yeah, okay, all right, well, that's all that we have to speak, I guess we'll start with Mr. Gaffey, if you have any things to share with us this evening.
I do not tonight, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Malta?
Broken record, but yeah, thank you for all that attended and all your input, it's very important to us, appreciate it greatly.
Thank you, Ms. Myers?
I've got a pretty important thing I need to say, Ashley, congratulations on your Athena Award, I'm very happy for you, well deserved, that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Knappich?
Just wanted to wish Ashley congratulations, it's a very well-deserved award, and I wanted to thank the hospital and the administration for putting together an excellent budget, and the presentation tonight, the meeting was very, very well done, Mr. Abernathy, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Abernathy?
Well, Ashley, I think I've known you probably 20 years, well deserved, congratulations. Also want to point out and just say congratulations to the Wayne County Board of Elections in the State of Ohio, the election in Ohio went off without a hitch, and Wayne County also went out, went off without a hitch, and I kind of delayed saying this congratulations because I, I think California's still counting, so it's just a testament to what our Board of Elections here in Wayne County does and what the State of Ohio does, so fantastic job to everybody involved for just the work they did, so I just want to go on record and just say congratulations to everybody involved, and that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Huzai?
I would echo what my fellow council members have said, congratulations, Ashley, thanks to Mr. Rohr at the hospital and Mr. Dordia from the city for the budget, and thank you for getting me home before the Browns came, go Browns.
The who?
The who?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Second.